Welcome to the 2021 Candidates Forum, sponsored by the Wallingford Community Women in conjunction with Wallingford Government Media. I'm Jean McFarlane, the program moderator. This segment features six of the 12 candidates running for town council. The format will be as follows. The first part of the program will consist of questions asked of the candidates by two reporters from the Record Journal. They are Lauren Tacores, Wallingford reporter, and Carla Santos, reporter for the Latino Communities Reporting Lab. This will be a round robin type format where each of the candidates will answer a question. The second part will allow each candidate to make a closing statement. During the question and answer portion of the program, each candidate will have two minutes to respond to a question. After the question and answer period, each candidate will have three minutes to make closing remarks. Before beginning the questioning, I'd like to introduce the six of the candidates running for town council. They are, left to right, Craig Fishbein, Republican; Joe Marone, Republican; Vincent Testa, Democrat; Christina Tata, Republican; Alexa Tomasi, Democrat; Gina Morgenstein, Democrat, is unable to attend, and I will read a statement from her at the end. Carla Santos, would you please ask your first question of Craig Fishbein?
Hello. What types of systemic impact on Wallingford would you like to see from the once-in-a-lifetime ARPA funds? What are some of the low-hanging fruits that are opportunities to address?
Well, thank you, Carla, and it's nice to meet you. You know, in Wallingford, as opposed to other towns, we've decided with the mayor's guidance to hire a consultant to advise us on what we could possibly do with those funds. You know, the mayor has represented to us that he would have those funds go to businesses and places that were negatively impacted by COVID. You know, I'm a little concerned about that because those are actually businesses that have survived. You know, we have a restaurant right on North Main Street that closed as a result of COVID. They were unable to actually operate with the outdoor dining and things like that. That's a business that's gone. You know, are we going to consider giving monies there? I look forward to the consultant giving us the menu of what we possibly could do. Another thing that I've discussed is we had a meeting a few weeks ago about Tyler Mill and trails out there. And, you know, there's some level of a dispute between walker hiking and road bike hiking. Certainly, our hiking trails, our open space got a lot of usage. I was able to use a lot of our open space for the first time during COVID. But that's another place that we could spend money, is blazing new trails specifically for, you know, mountain biking, those kinds of things. Open space, on our town council agenda next week, there's going to be another acquisition of open space that we are contemplating. I'm very in favor of open space acquiring those kinds of properties, and those are other areas I'd like to look at. But I look forward to the consultant's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Tacores, would you please ask the next question of Joe Marone?
Hi, Joe.
Hey, Lauren.
Last month, the Planning and Zoning Commission rejected a plan to build an Amazon facility on the former Bristol Myers Squibb property. In your opinion, what's the best use for the BMS site?
So, thank you for that question, Lauren. The, and it's a great question because the issue really with the, with the Amazon Center was traffic, right? And that's sort of what held up this, this whole process. So when we say, what's the best use of the property? I mean, I think the best use is whatever the market will bear for what would fit best in that space. So, the traffic issue, I don't think that that's an insurmountable problem. I mean, I think that there's ways you could reroute the traffic, there's things you could do to make it more accommodating to, to the residents. I know there's some issues with the street behind the property, which could be used potentially for trucks, but I think there's ways to manage the, the whole traffic flow issue. So, you know, when you say, what's the best use? I don't think government gets to pick what kind of business goes in that space, right? It's really, what's the market going to bear? You know, with the data centers, we sort of went out and bribed a company to, to develop something specific here, right? But, you know, I wouldn't advocate for something like that. I think you just have to see what the market will bear. So I think in the end, it's whatever's going to fill that space and, and, you know, pay the, the tax to accommodate that, that location. When we put Bristol Myers in that space, we gave them a sweetheart deal, you know, to, we reduced their, their tax burden to get them here. And then ultimately, when the state law changed, they left because they found greener pastures somewhere else. So I think if anything else, what we should have learned from that is maybe the, the sweetheart deal isn't always the way to go. Maybe you just see what the, what the market will bring, you know, and then you accommodate that business as best you can. Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you. Carla, would you please ask the next question of Vincent Testa?
There have been two council budgets in arrode that the mayor has vetoed, and the town still seems to have a lot of money left over. Where do you see room for improvement in the budget creation process?
Good evening, and thank you. That's a great question. It appears, it seems that we, during the budgeting process, there's a lot of overestimating of expenses, underestimating of revenues. Some would say that's cautious, and that's not necessarily a bad way to go. But what I think we need to do is be a little more careful with, or taking a closer look at our personnel situations. We have a lot of open positions that haven't been filled and don't get filled, yet we budget for the positions, and that inevitably becomes extra surplus money. So I think the most important thing is that there's a, there's an honest dialogue among the town councilors and in between the council and the mayor to just be a little more, I guess, look a little closer at what those actual expenses are going to be. And I think another area where we, we, I've been promoting this for many years, we should be considering taking more of our capital expenditures, our one-time expenses, and utilizing our bonding opportunities and large package bonding offerings, because that uses, that uses cash. And the more you, and I'm not saying going on a borrowing spree, but the more you bond responsibly, that allows you to then budget responsibly because you know what your payments are going to be, and you're not using your free cash for one-time expenditures.
Lauren, would you please ask the next question of Christina Tata?
Yes, hi.
Hi, Lauren.
Same question. Where do you see room for improvement in the budget creation process?
Thank you for the question. My first budget on the council, I asked every department head where they could save 1%. And my idea was, if everybody could give up just a little bit, we would have one large savings amount, and we could kind of spread it out amongst everybody and find savings that way. So I asked the question of every single department head. That plan didn't end up happening, but what it did do was it opened up the door to some good conversations amongst the councilors and with department heads to find where we could save. And so that year, we were able to keep taxes flat. There was no tax increase due to the bipartisan plan that kept our taxes flat. My second budget, we were actually able to reduce taxes, and it was my motion that passed that reduced taxes by a third of a mill. And so I think your question is, how do we do that? How do we, how do we amend the budget and find these savings? I think, at least what I do, is I go through line by line, identify where I think there may be savings, talk to the department heads, talk to the administration, go over things with my fellow councilors on both sides of the aisle, and find areas where we can save. And that is what I did for my first two budgets, and I would certainly continue to do that going forward. Thank you.
Carla, would you please ask the next question of Alexa Tomasi?
The proposed data centers have raised concerns from neighbors about noise and vibration. Last time the town had a similar issue with business and noise at Thurston Foods, the town changed the law. What do you see as the solution to accommodate the data centers and appease the neighbors?
I do think, I do, sorry, is it the other way? It's just not that loud, okay? I do think the data centers are a useful financial tool for the town, but I've, of course, taken into consideration the neighbors' concerns. I know that built into the contract is, is a noise ordinance, that if they do violate the noise ordinance, then they can't stay. So I think that is a good sort of barrier to keep them to, confined to what the neighbors are hoping for, but there's kind of a backup plan for if it doesn't work out. I think the money that we will earn from having the data centers here is, is worth this project moving forward, and that stuff that we can, money that we can reinvest in the town for, for other projects that need to get done to move us forward.
Lauren, would you please ask the next question of Craig Fishbein?
The council had 32 days to review the municipal host fee agreement with GotSpace to build the data centers. That's a pretty speedy push-through. Who does that ultimately benefit?
GotSpace? I mean, in a nutshell, you know, I spent a lot of time reviewing those documents. I was very concerned, I remain very concerned. You know, it was quite clear that the developer wanted an answer right away. In fact, I think at the first meeting, they had expected an answer right away, and they were disappointed that we, you know, took a step back, we wanted to review, there were some revisions, you know. I had discussions with Attorney Fizano regarding, you know, where these buildings were going to be, how close to the residents, all of that stuff. I know there were modifications. Ultimately, I think the, the final version we got within days of, of that meeting. I ended up voting no. I was uncomfortable with certain aspects of what we, we left with and the protections for the residents in that area. But, you know, I, I think, you know, it's, it's an easy answer, is that rushing that does not benefit the town, and could only possibly benefit the proposed developer. You know, that being said, I have watched what has gone on in planning and zoning. I've been very happy with certain protections they've put into place, as far as the setback, you know, greenery, things like that. I've been out there, I've talked to residents, you know, they're still not happy. But I've shared with them, you know, some of these things, and, you know, I think we're in a better place, I'm a little more comfortable. I still wouldn't vote for it, but ultimately, I think rushing that helped GotSpace. So, thank you.
Carla, would you please ask the next question of Joe Maroney?
So let's assume that the data centers are successfully built. Everyone is happy with the noise issue. What would you like to do with the extra revenue, considering that we're in a good spot for the police station, open space, and school roofs?
Yeah, so thank you, Carla, that's a great question. So, you know, if, essentially, the question is, if Wallingford had a windfall, right, which is what we're, how we're kind of viewing the, the data centers, what would we do with a windfall? I think there's a lot of priorities right now that are sort of in the, in the pipeline that, that could be financed in the short term. The first of which would be the community pool. You know, it's a, you know, you talk about critical government functions, right? Community pool is a park. One of the critical government functions is to maintain parks, and that's one that we've sort of neglected our duties on. So I think that would be a great place to start with the money. Beyond that, I think reducing people's taxes, I think, would be the, another great place. So pay for other, you know, other items in the budget. I don't think the issue in town necessarily has been a shortage of money, but I think, you know, when you look at community pool, it's a, it's a big expenditure. So I think you, you don't want to go in some direction like that. In addition, I think anything that's going to help, that helps residents, right? Road paving, we're a little behind on our, on our road paving. We have some, you know, there's certain parts of town that have been sort of neglected there as well. So sidewalks, roads, sort of all the, the things that are critical government functions is the places that I would like to see the money go. And then ultimately, you know, to the, whatever you spend the money on from the, the data center money helps to reduce the mill rate and reduce folks' taxes. So, thank you, Carla.
Lauren, would you please ask the next question of Vincent Testa?
Hi.
Hi, Lauren.
So, a lot of people say that we should offer incentives to attract businesses to town, yet the implementation of the Town Center Zone and the Incentive Housing Zone did not yield a huge uptick in development. What should we be doing differently?
I'm not sure that we need to be doing things differently. I mean, what we, we've done a lot to try to set the table for developers to move into the area. I think, right now, we've just been basically suffering from the times we're in. There were not a lot of investment going on, especially for the last couple of years, obviously with the pandemic. What we tried to do, I know with, in the downtown area, when I say downtown, we're talking around the train station and all. We tried to come up with something that allows developers the opportunity to, to get the best return on their dollar while still improving the area. And that means allowing for mixed-use development. Allow them to put apartments on the second, third floor of a building, let them go a little higher, and do commercial and retail-type stuff along the bottom. I think what's been happening, we heard this from a lot of developers, the, the timing just hasn't been right yet, where they've been able to find a, a property that is large enough, that a lot, that makes it worthwhile for them to invest, you know, the millions of dollars they'd have to invest. I think what people are trying to do is potentially bring together different parcels, and now you've got a lot of people involved. So, I don't, I don't think there are any more incentives that we need to provide. The incentives are there, the favorable zoning is there. I think it's just a matter of showing the willingness to, to do other things. We, we agreed to pave the, the Brothers parking lot, which was a big part of the zoning discussion. If the people develop those properties the way we would like them to, they would literally need that parking for the overflow from the properties that they have. So, we need to complete that lot, we need to finish that project, and come up with a creative use for the, for the original train station, which is not a train station, of course. And that would draw more people into the downtown and make it more attractive.
Thank you. Carla, would you please ask the next question of Christina Tata?
How do you plan on creating better relationships with the growing Latino population so that they feel that they also belong to the town?
Great, thank you for the question. I think that we have a really valuable group in, in Wallingford, the Spanish community of Wallingford, or otherwise known as SCOW, and they do wonderful work and really help Latino residents to fit into the community. They offer services above and beyond, I think, what the government could ever really do. I'm, I'm kind of a strong believer in private organizations typically do better than government, and so I think that having SCOW in town is, is the best way that we can support our Latino population. And if the town can then support SCOW and give them what they need, I, I think that's, that's really the best way to help. I know I have spent a lot of time at SCOW and at SCOW events, and, and I have learned a lot about the community and made some friends through SCOW, and I know that recently, I had heard that some of their funding was, was cut, not at the town level, but I believe through a state grant was what I heard. So, I think when we can, when legislators can help to fund programs such as that, whether at the town level or the state level even, I'm all for letting them do what they do best, kind of letting government maybe take a little bit of a backseat, but definitely support them in all the ways that they ask us to support them. Thank you.
Lauren, would you please ask the next question of Alexa Tomasi?
All right. Hi. Advertising in parks keeps coming up and keeps getting deferred. Are you in favor of putting ads in parks?
I have to say, I never really thought about it, but I, sort of what, what my colleague on our slate, Nicole, said, I think if they're not damaging to children or families, it seems like easy revenue for the town. I think where we put them will matter, how big they are, what they look like is going to be an important factor, but I think in terms of things we can do to raise revenue in town, it seems like kind of a low, low effort tactic to try. So, I, I could see why it would be worth trying.
Carla, would you please ask the next question of Craig Fishbein?
The police department has many open officer positions. Other towns budget a dollar a month per FTE to avoid overfunding. Is that something Wallingford should consider come budget time?
You know, it's very interesting. I didn't know about other towns doing that until I was sitting here and I heard the question earlier, and I was thinking, you know, that's a decent way to deal with that. That would solve some problems. So, you know, it's interesting where you get information from. We've never discussed it, quite frankly. It would seem to make sense because we, you know, I've been on the council about 12 years. I think every year, we have budgeted for positions that we haven't filled. And, you know, it's difficult to feel, to fill police officer positions. I think we're down about 11 officers presently. I think that was the latest report to us. That's a lot of money. So if we go into the next budget, and if we just took half of those and treated them in that manner, I think it would be a benefit for the taxpayers, be a benefit for the budget, and I'm, I'm very happy that you brought the idea. I learned something tonight, so, thank you.
Lauren, would you please ask the next question of Joe Maroney?
All right. Community pool, as it was bid two years ago, would now be more expensive due to inflation and COVID disruption. What plan do you see yourself supporting?
So, yeah, Lauren, that's a great question. So I, as I stated earlier, community pools is something that's important to me. So I think that if the, if the cost in and of itself is the issue, I think there's other things that you could do to try to mitigate the cost. But before we get to mitigating the cost, you know, no matter when you go out to bid on the project, it's just going to get more expensive over time, right? There's never going to be a point in the future where it's going to be cheaper. And I know that, you know, right now, we're under sort of economic hard times with inflation, but I don't see a, a five years or 10 years in the future where this is going to be cheaper. So I think that you either need to bite the bullet and pay the price to get it done the way you want to have it done, or you have to change the plan. So if you want, if you were going to change the plan, what could you do? Well, you know, right now, we have a smaller pool, and the splash pad sort of is the, the centerpiece of it. You could further reduce the size of the pool, you could eliminate the pool altogether with and just go with a splash pad. You know, there's a few different, you could look at any configuration, say, to try to reduce the cost of the project. I think at this point, though, I think you just need to bite the bullet, and we need to decide, you know, what the, when the appropriate time is, and just get the project done. Because, like I say, it's never going to get cheaper, right? So if this is a priority for the town, which I think it should be, then I think you, you, the committee, you know, we're already $600,000 into this project, right? In terms of fees for, for development and design and so on. So, we, we have a, we appointed a committee of townspeople to come up with a plan. We vetted the plan, everyone seemed to like the plan until we got the cost, and then the cost became the issue. So I think if you're going to bond it, if you were willing to bond 5 million, you know, what's the difference if you bond 7 or 8 million at, at that point? And the answer's $3 million, right? That you're passing on to the next, for the next 20 years. But, but the point is, either you want to do the project or you don't. And if you're committed to it, then you get it done, you know, whatever the, as long as the cost is within reason. Thanks, Lauren.
Carla, would you please ask the next question of Vincent Testa?
Climate change is a reality that we are experiencing. Although many policies are set at the state and national level, what initiatives would you implement at the local level to help the Wallingford community adapt to a changing climate and use town resources sustainably?
That's a, that's an interesting question. It's a great question. It also, I mean, frankly, it, it does fall into the category of things that, you know, really are national, world affair type, as a world affair type issue, state, more so than local. So what really could we do at the local level? Well, we, we're fortunate enough that we have our own utility company, we have our own electric division. I've always felt that our electric division should do, make more attempts to get involved in renewable energy. We've had discussions about it. So, I mean, that's an obvious area where we can promote renewable energy, even if it's not something that has a dramatic impact on our, on our own particular usage and rates because we don't generate electricity. The example you're setting is important. It shows that there's a commitment on the part of the community to face the realities of the needs of moving away from fossil fuels. We are, in many ways, at the, at the mercy of the suppliers that we buy our electricity from, but we can do all we can to try to stay away from dirty fuels, if you will, as far as where the electricity is generated. Aside from that, we can do more to promote recycling. I think it's just setting the example that environmental protection is important. That, that is, that's something I think that would be very important.
Lauren, would you please ask the next question of Christina Tata?
Yes, hi. The idea has been floated to move adult ed from their current location. How do you address the public perception of moving the most ethnically diverse group in town out of their long-term location?
Thank you for that question. As I've stated in the past, I do want to see something happen with the historic train station. I feel that that could be really the gem of the downtown that we need. There's a lot of talk of what to do with our downtown and how to make it more of a destination similar to how the uptown is, and I think that we could possibly lease out the historic train station or, and have some sort of a creative use there, a restaurant. So I am a supporter of doing something with the historic train station, but that does present the problem of what do we do with, with adult ed? Adult ed needs a location that is able to be accessed easily for people who do not have vehicles. I think keeping it in the, in the center of town would make sense, but I don't necessarily think it needs to be in the historic train station because I think there may be a better use for that train station, and we can find somewhere for adult ed. One idea that's kind of been out there that I'm, I'm not sure if I'm supportive of or not, but with the police station moving, we will have that building freed up in the center of town, so possibly adult ed could use that. Or with the school projects that are going on, where they're thinking of maybe consolidating or, or doing some renovations to the schools, we could perhaps find somewhere in a school for adult ed where the location would, would be, would be a good thing for adult ed. So, I am in favor of doing something with the train station, but I think that we first need to talk to adult ed and find out what their needs are, and make sure that they're comfortable with their move before we do anything with that. Thank you.
Carla, would you please ask the last question to Alexa Tomasi?
Where would you cut the budget?
That's a great question. I think it's important to take a look at everything and make sure everything's well-funded, which it is. I think we, we know that we usually end up with extra money. So I would have to look really hard at the budget as it stands and see if there's anything that needs to be cut or should be cut. And I think a little bit of community feedback would be helpful on that, too, from constituents.
And I think a little bit of community feedback would be helpful on that, too, from constituents. I would have to work with my colleagues on the town council to decide where the best use of a cut may be, if it exists.
Thank you. That concludes the question and answer portion of the program. Each candidate will now have three minutes to make a closing statement. Mr. Fishbein, would you please begin?
Thank you. Some things in this world are so easy that they create apps, that you can do them. A few weeks ago, I was having breakfast at one of my favorite breakfast places in town, Dad's on Route 5. My favorite breakfast's spinach mushroom Swiss omelet, burnt raisin toast, home fries, coffee. At a table right by me, there was a mom and a son, and they're having a conversation. And I could tell that, you know, the boy just wanted to go home and play video games. And the mom didn't want that to happen, so she's telling him what they're going to do for the day. And she starts off with, well, we're going to go up to Kohl's, we're going to buy some clothes. Son's playing on his phone, he says, Mom, there's an app for that. We're going to go to Home Depot, we're going to buy some paint, because your dad wants to redo the porch. Mom, there's an app for that. We're going to go to ShopRite, buy some groceries. There's an app for that. She stopped frustrated. She said to him, you know what there's not an app for? He said, what? Being a mom and you doing your homework. They both laughed. You know, a charming piece of Americana. Being on the town council, there's no app for that. We make some very difficult decisions, some that affect a lot of people, some that affect a few people, many times very important decisions. When I make decisions on the town council, I try and follow my principles. Smaller government, lower taxes, less interference in the day-to-day affairs of our law-abiding citizens. You may not agree with all of the decisions that I've made, but I try and stick with my principles. And if you agree with those principles, you know what to do on Election Day. Thankfully, you can't do that with an app. Thank you. God bless America.
Thank you. Mr. Maroni, would you please make your statement?
Thank you very much. And thank you to the Wallingford community women, to Carla and Lauren from The Record Journal for the work that you did. So I have two students at Lyman Hall High School, and they have a marching band show this year. And if you haven't seen it, you should see it. It's pretty good. The name of the show is Becoming Tin, and it's based on the Tin Man from The Wizard of Oz. So if you know The Wizard of Oz story, or if you've read the book certainly, you know, the Tin Man started out as a woodcutter who was in love with a munchkin girl. And because the wicked witch didn't want him to marry the munchkin girl, she turned him into tin, right? And so the Tin Man feels like, because he has no physical heart, that he has no heart. So I think in Wallingford, the heart is the people. So let's shift gears for a second. Let's talk about the pandemic. The pandemic has been wonderful for government at every level, right? State, federal, local government. Government has assumed powers that it hasn't had in the past, right? The president, through executive orders, taken on a bunch of responsibilities that he doesn't really have authority for. The governor has his emergency powers. The mayor of Wallingford has shown a great deal of restraint in this regard, right? But again, it's still been good for Wallingford financially, because we're providing fewer services for the same price. So where's this all going? So the Tin Man forgot that the ability, or that the ability to love comes from the mind, right, and not from the heart. So having no physical heart really has no bearing on his ability to love. I think it's easy for government to forget that the power in the community comes from the people and not from the government. And so I think that the, really what I'm about as a candidate is, or as your town councillor is, remembering that the power is given to me by the people, and I'm in a position of service and not in a position of lordship or authority over anyone in the community. So what do I stand for? Open government. Fiscal restraint is a big one. Examining our budget, like line by line, and coming up with ways that we, I think there's a lot of things we do in town that we could do better in terms of how we spend your money. I'm really about letting the people do what the people want to do, right? Get government out of the way and let people do what they feel is appropriate for them. So when you walk into the voting booth, I ask for your vote, and if you haven't seen the Lyman Hall show, you should go see it. So thank you very much.
Mr. Testa, would you please make your statement?
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. I'm sorry, but now all I can think about is the scarecrow, whether or not I have a brain. Well, I've got two minutes to see. Anyway, I loved it. I want to thank the Wallingford community women for this opportunity. Lauren, Carla, thank you very much. Thank you to everybody who's here, and thank all of you at home for watching. A little bit about me, my name is Vinnie Testa. I am a Wallingford native, been here pretty much my whole life. Happily married to Kimberly Testa. We have, I'm the father and stepfather to five grown children, and now a grandfather to an amazing human perpetual motion machine who, let's hope, is going to help keep me young. It's a real treat. I'm currently completing my eighth term on the town council. Prior to that, I served on the Board of Ed for eight years and the Wetlands Commission for two. So for about 30 years, I've been honored to serve you. And it's always been an honor. I've always considered it a great responsibility. You put a lot of faith in us to make decisions on your behalf, and I take that responsibility very seriously. I think over the years, I've shown that I'm responsive to you, available to you. And then when it's time to make a decision, I try, I work closely with all of my colleagues, regardless of party. I'm very proud of my ability to work in a bipartisan way. And also with the mayor, to try to formulate responsible budgets and make decisions to get things done. But whatever we do, I always try to use as my guiding principle, what is in the best interest of the community as a whole? Not everybody's always going to be happy with what we do, but we try to do the best we can for our whole community. I enjoy what I'm doing. I still enjoy it tremendously. It's very important to me to know that I have the ability to have an effect on the quality of life in my community that I grew up in. And it's still exciting for me, and I just hope to continue to do it for you. I hope you feel I've done a good job, and if so, I ask for your vote and the opportunity to continue to serve you on the town council. I also ask that you give serious consideration to our mayoral candidate, Riley O'Connell. He's a smart person, smart guy, great experience. I think he's got some ideas that you'd find very attractive. I'm not going to give them to you, we don't have time, but please, go to his website, read what he has to say. I think you'll be impressed. And he's worthy of your consideration, and I ask you to consider the whole Democratic team that I'm running with. Thank you again, and I hope I have your vote.
Ms. Tatta, would you please make your statement?
Thank you. Thank you to the Wallingford community women and to Lauren and Carla in The Record Journal. It's truly been an honor to be serving my current term, my first term on the Wallingford Town Council. I thank everybody for the faith that you had in me to be currently serving, and I'm hopeful that I've earned your vote for election again. When I ran for my first term, I promised to treat your tax dollars as if they were my own. As I said during the answer to my first question, I worked very hard on my two budgets that I've been involved with so far, working with councillors from all sides of the aisle to keep taxes flat, my first budget, and then it was my motion that reduced taxes, our second budget. And I was glad to be able to do that during the financial pressures of COVID. I promise to value results over rhetoric, and that's kind of part of my personality. I'm very results-driven. When the citizens told us that they were upset about the lack of air conditioning in the animal shelter, and the council was told that there was really nothing we could do, I made it my priority to find out what we could do. And in the charter, I found a provision that said that the town council did have authority over gift money, and we were able to use that gift money to get that project rolling. And so it was my motion that passed unanimously that got that project to where it is today, so that work can begin. If reelected, I promise to continue with these priorities of mine, which are being a good steward of your money, valuing results over rhetoric, and putting the needs of the town before partisan politics. I view this election as a report card on how I've done, and I hope that you think that I have earned your vote for reelection to the town council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tomasi, would you please make your statement?
I want to thank Carla and Lauren and the Wallingford community women for having us tonight. I'm a lifelong member of Wallingford. I grew up here and went to school here, and I never really left. I consider myself an advocate, an activist, and an organizer. I spent five years in the nonprofit world helping shape and develop and pass some state and federal-level policy, which I'm very proud of. And in town, I've worked with a number of members of the community on a number of different issues, including a student who actually had the same high school teacher as me and wanted to get more involved in the advocacy space. And with them, we've tackled a lot of really important social issues. And so I just felt like the next logical step for me was to run for something, to make the most positive change. I've been knocking doors with the other candidates on our slate since March. We've experienced every season and every type of weather. And one thing that remains the same is the constant feedback from the community that they love this town, just like we all do, but that there's a couple of things that could make it so much better and make quality of life better. And there are just small changes that we can make when we work together. It's an amazing place, but with community input and some small changes, we can really improve it. I hope I can earn your vote on November 2nd for Wallingford's future and all the good things still to come, and I hope you support the rest of the Democratic slate as well.
Thank you. I will now read the statement from Gina Morgensting. Good evening, everyone. My apologies for my absence tonight. As a medical provider, the pandemic has not ended, and my medical colleagues are still stretched beyond capacity. There is no extra coverage, and I am fulfilling my obligation to my patients and cannot attend. Thank you to the Wallingford community women for all your community service. Thank you to the members of the press. Your local coverage is essential and vital. Serving the Wallingford community as a town councillor and medical provider during this pandemic has been a challenge. Public health and safety must be guaranteed for all. It has been a struggle. I advocated for town hall to close earlier than the mayor allowed. I raised objections at not allowing town employees to work remotely, and raised objections when ballot boxes were not placed outside to protect the health of voters. I successfully got, along with councillor Shoretale, regular health department updates to be shared publicly at each meeting, but that was an ongoing struggle. I advocated for the continued remote meetings against my colleagues' wishes when they wanted in-public meetings to start again. Continued hybrid meetings were denied. Subsequently after that, the second wave hit our community hard again. Even with the pandemic, other decisions were made. I am proud to continue to support the restoration of the community pool park. Our community deserves it. I voted with a bipartisan majority to lower the mayor's proposed tax increases. I voted against a majority who voted for a parking lot at the Brothers Lot when we could have pursued private development. I have voted to explore economic opportunities, because we cannot continue to have the tax burden increasingly fall on residential taxpayers. I have advocated for clean energy opportunities, electric car charging stations, and the restoration of the Energy Conservation Committee. We must have representation that fully understands the challenges before us. The world does not adapt to us. We must adapt to the world as it changes. Our physical and economic health depends on our leaders having that ability. I am humbly asking for your trust and vote for myself and the Democratic Town Council team. I am also asking that you also vote for our new leadership personified by mayoral candidate Riley O'Connell. Listen tonight to these new voices. I've been meeting people at door since March regularly with Alexa Tomasi. She and our entire slate will bring to Wallingford the future we need and deserve. Thank you for the privilege of serving this community twice and looking forward to a future where we can all thrive and reach Wallingford's full untapped potential. Councilwoman Gina Morgensting. Thank you. This concludes the 2021 Town Council Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford community women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 2nd. Thank you, guys. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.